It's 7 o'clock. We're calling to order the meeting of the Town Hall of X Planning Board for Thursday, March 21, 2024. I'm going to do something that I typically forget to do. I'm going to announce the names of the members here. Present are Rick Murray, to my extreme left. To my immediate left is Bert Gainer. To my right is Amy Tru, myself Tom Millius. And Brendan Elliott is not going to be with us this evening. He has other engagements. We're located in the Selectman's Meeting Room in the Town Hall at 499 Plymouth Street. I suppose we should start with the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? A second. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. We have an approval letter? Oh, yes, we need an affirmation very quickly. I signed as chair for the letter for 650 Industrial Street so that they could get it recorded. We just need a vote to affirm the signature. If I can get a motion.
Did the letter just state that they needed to comply with the handicap CMA?
It's exactly the way we wrote it. Exactly verbatim what we discussed at the meeting.
Okay. Did it include all of the Halifax bylaws?
The easements and everything that we talked about that night at the... Is there probably a copy in here?
You have the folder. Grazie.
I'll make a motion to forward the...
To affirm. Yep.
Just... Yes, written.
Moved to affirm. Can I get a second? Second. Moved and seconded to affirm the letter of...
650?
Yeah.
Are you looking for like a site plan number? Or are you just going to use it?
No, it's on file number 24, Special Permit 240. The letter from the planning board acknowledging the approval of the site plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on. I'll be taking this a little... Let's go to our appointments. We're going to continue the hearing for 24, Special Permit 241, 416 R, Plymouth Street. Valdemiro Barbosa. Did I say that right or even close?
You did. Good job.
Proposed to shed manufacturing business, returning with an updated site plan of the entire building and our site and asked for by the planning board. I think everybody's got a copy. I had a kid who spoke to Joe Webby. He was often prepared the plan. I mentioned that there was a couple of things I thought needed to be added. And they were added. The amount of parking spaces, the designated spaces for the proposed use in the rear building. And wanted them to acknowledge the fact that there in fact was a door now on the westerly side of the building, which I believe was specifically for K-9 camp. He seemed to at least make those acknowledgements. Nothing else has changed on the site.
No, that's not true. There's two doors that are added to the front of the building closest to Rockland Trust.
One of the doors. I did note that there was another door in the front of that, in the front of the building.
Two. They added two over the weekend. I have pictures.
This weekend?
A couple of weekends ago.
I noticed that, I noticed one door. I did not notice the other.
So they split the existing church into at least two other occupancies. So we have to make sure that the parking is there for that as well. Because there's two more uses. They split that large church into the K-9 and then they split what's listed as existing church now into two units. So we need to find out what those uses are and have the building split. And then make sure the parking fits their uses.
What do they have for square footage?
But it also goes by use.
Well, yeah, I know how it goes. The restaurant's a little west. Maybe I should have put that other door on there because I mentioned that to him.
And then the two on the front as well.
Well, he did make note of the door on the side. He didn't draw it in. I thought there was another door on the front.
Which side to side? It says door in like the north side?
Yeah, that was for the K-9 camp. Hasn't changed any square footage.
But it did divide into more usage. So if that's the case, so now we're taking a church and adding three and then we're adding another one out in the back because that was never...
I'll give you that we don't know if the church is still there or not.
It's not. It was moved out over a year ago.
So was parking determined by square footage of the building or?
Usage.
Usage.
I would also say that the updated plan needs to go to a site peer review.
Yeah, well, I disagree with that because there's nothing changed outside.
Well, yes, there has been. This entire thing has been cleared of all trees. They changed where the septic system was. We're adding usages. And they've cleared out all behind here. Needs to have a peer review.
I disagree.
It's the way it goes.
What do they need? If they split where it says existing church into two, determine parking spaces by usage, what do they need per?
Well, it depends on whether it's retail, restaurant, a professional office.
Services.
He didn't break it down. That would have been awful.
That restaurant on the end is open. I said, okay, I'm going out today.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah, it is open.
It's open periodically.
Whether it's full time or not, I don't believe it is, but I was told it was not like full time.
Right.
But I don't know what the hours are for days of the week or anything like that. But I did see a customer coming out with a takeout bag today.
Yeah, it's very limited.
Conservation also allowed for where Nazarellis Farm Stand to clear conservation area in that time period. And there has not been any peer review on any of this. And I believe that we are in agreement in the past that we needed to send everything out for peer review to be sure. So we can't have 285 Home Street going out for a peer review and not this one.
Yeah, well, this is an existing site.
So is the other one.
For a tremendous amount. No, the other one was non-existent. They changed that considerably. They changed the use.
They did here too.
Yeah.
Added usages, added buildings.
You guys gave them a pass on everything. They didn't have to do anything.
I didn't.
Well, I'm just saying, they gave them a pass on everything. I mean, we've got another place that added a building up in the industrial park.
Well, we need to be consistent on everything. If we're going to ask 285 Home Street to do it, then we have to also ask this or else we're opening ourselves up for a lawsuit.
Well, you should know about that.
Oh, I know about some of them, huh?
Well, I'm willing to entertain any discussion on this.
So as far as the use goes with what the application is in front of us, how many parking spaces do they need for the 2,400 square foot existing building in the rear of the parking lot?
It comes down to usage. What do you have for employees in there? Just two of yous, right?
Just...
There's four dedicated spots for that. I've never seen that parking lot even close to being four.
But now we're adding.
I see five.
Now we're adding. Instead of having one big, we're having three. And then we added Nazaralis and we... And again, that was not my vote to add without having a peer review. We didn't have a full site plan then. And they cleared a whole bunch of trees, just like 285.
Anything, gentlemen? I don't see anything.
So again, how many spaces do we need then for the uses of the, of the application that's in front of us?
We'd have to fix, we'd have to do a little study on that or have him do it, have Joe do it. I'm sure with five spaces.
Joe and five, right?
Yeah, as far as what he's doing.
Yeah.
Five's more than adequate.
Do one of them have to be designated handicap?
He certainly has the room to do it. There are some handicapped, there isn't a handicap on the near.
Yeah, we all rely on existing, so you got it right.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, I think with a close proximity.
Well, we at least have to send it back for the changes. And I still motion that we sign it out for peer review and get a revolving fund going.
I don't have a problem myself personally, just getting the updates on the plan. I think at this point, all a peer review is going to do is just...
Cost more time and money.
Yeah, and not get anywhere in an existing site that's been operating for a tremendous amount of...
Well, I was just going to say that was my next question. When was, when was this existing building erected, built?
It's never been rented out. It was a pump house. So it's adding another use there.
Building was erected, it was what, 20 years ago, 30 years ago?
That thing failed.
Didn't it? Wasn't it also used as like a bottle return place too or something? Ten years ago when Kings was there?
That was behind where actually John Shay was.
Yeah, yeah. That building was erected because of the laundromat, because they had to treat the water coming out of it, sulfates. So that, that's got to go back 30 years anyway. Yeah, yeah. I'm looking at somebody that might have a recollection there other than myself.
So what's the sewer reason for it, Tom? Is that for the cowwash?
That's for the entire building. It was actually over on Country Club Way on Paul Reed's property. And then they found a spot and moved it over.
And cleared all the trees.
Personally, I'm good with just updating the plan, but I'm willing to listen to anybody else's comments.
Well, I think basically the tree line two, most of it being shown behind the wetlands designation is delineated by Michelle Reer in 2023.
It's all within the 100 Wetlands District.
Well, it's behind all the drainage basins and all sultry.
But none of them were peer reviewed.
I don't know that Concom didn't do some of that because they were involved in this. We could ask. I thought we did have a peer review for Nazarell. I remember Pat Brennan talking.
We did not. And then you guys voted it in the last meeting of May before the election, two to one, and approved it without having a full site plan.
Well, he brought a site plan that was good enough for me at the time.
Yeah, this was pretty much the site plan that was presented.
I could swear I remember Brennan saying he didn't see any problem with it.
It was never peer reviewed.
Yeah, he was present at our meetings regarding.
Well, even that is over and beyond what the site plan called for that you guys approved. And it's funny because I think last year I was saying we need a full site plan on all kinds of different uses when we denied, well, we didn't deny, but we couldn't do anything with D'Souza who wanted to rent out this building because you needed a site plan. And then all of a sudden, one day, we just negated all of that when it wasn't on the agenda.
Mr. Stern did.
No, this was not turned in. Not peer reviewed, not gone over. It was just pushed through.
We don't want to go to push through. I can give you a list of push through.
I can too.
I don't understand what you have to have peer reviewed. Everything here is all existing. It's been, it's been there for years.
Yeah, and the building itself was pre-existing prior to, prior to...
And none of the...
Bylaws, wasn't it?
However...
A peer review is not going to go out and look at the trees. He's going to look at the site plan.
Well, isn't that the same thing? And I know you can't comment on 285 Home Street, which is being pushed for a peer review?
It is, huh?
Yeah.
It had a peer review before. They just never made to do anything about it.
Good point.
You know, all this drainage and everything you see and everything all pre-existing, I don't understand why, what peer review would have to say about it? The only thing we have is parking spaces. That's pretty much about it. It seems like every time this property comes up for some tenant, it just runs into this every single time.
And this is how we were going to remediate it. And that was the conversation at the last meeting.
Well, we got a site plan now, Amy.
It's not peer reviewed and we agreed as a board.
And it's not new.
We agreed as a board to prevent issues. We would be on the same page with every single one of them, which it makes sense because we can't treat one differently than the other. Or we're opening the town up for a lawsuit.
Well, there's no, there's no change in the footprint on any of the buildings.
We're adding.
Pre-existing prior to zoning and they've been existing that way before, which is with the same site plan, not identical one, but pretty much the same setup when Nazarellis went in, when K-9 went in. And if we, if we didn't require it for them, I don't see, again, I agree with Amy. You can't do for one and not do for the other. If we didn't require that and we felt we had enough information in front of us and information provided for by, by Mr. Brennan, then I do think this is, this will suffice.
He did not peer review it.
I didn't say that. I said he came and gave his opinion on that.
You, this is an added use. If you, if you now rent out this building, it's a completely different, it's never been rented out prior, ever.
It was a supermarket.
Well, no, no, no. The existing 2,400 square foot building has never been rented out. It's never had a tenant.
It's never had a tenant, but it had people operating the equipment.
It's a different thing.
People to people.
It was used.
It was used. It wasn't vacant. It's been vacant for a while.
But it didn't have employees that needed to park there and it didn't have...
Well, it didn't operate itself.
It's within the 100 Wetlands buffer. The line goes right through it.
Well, that's, that's Concom. Concom has been over this.
Not this. They haven't seen this. This isn't gone to conservation.
All the drainage basins and everything within the 100 feet were looked at by Concom.
You weren't sure a few minutes ago. Are you sure about that?
I'm sure the Concoms looked at it, absolutely. I mean, they wouldn't have put a whole new septic system in and everything else without conservation being involved with this.
They would have had to have been.
I mean, that's, that's a no brainer.
Well, we're adding uses.
And they're in charge of the wetlands.
And they do, and that's a different, we need to do a site plan on the things that we do on our parts of the bylaw. We do a peer review.
We can waive things.
You like that?
You pick and choose what you like to do too, Amy.
No, I don't.
Yeah, you do.
I'm pretty set.
We want to talk about clothes?
Excuse me?
Okay, we will.
I didn't waive anything there at all.
Okay.
I didn't.
Anyway.
I thought you didn't keep up with the plan before you ran for it.
That was notorious. It was hard not to move.
Right.
If you want, go ahead. I got in trouble last time I made a motion in this property.
It's not funny. This is serious.
Yeah, that was funny.
I'll make a motion to approve the application, what is it, 24-7 PR-241 as presented with the, with the following condition, that the requested changes in the doors opening as was previously discussed.
Be included in the...
Yeah, be included.
If I have a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the plan subject to updating the plan to include the doors that have been added onto the plan. And I might want to add one thing to your, to your motion to designate one of the five spots in the back for a handicap spot.
If required?
If required.
Okay.
Because it would be in proximity of the building as opposed to being down there.
That's fine with me, with my motion to include that.
Is the second okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve the plan subject to the addition on the plan of the location of the doors that were added and to include a handicap spot in the designated parking area for the custom shed business if required. All those in favor will do a roll call. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
No.
Ms. Millius?
Yes.
Approved. Moving on. You just got to get, put those other couple of things on the plan. Did you understand where we were going with it?
Yes, so you guys want the handicap parking space if needed?
If needed.
And the second door added to the site plan.
Yeah, the, whatever, how many doors? I thought there was only two added, but maybe there's three?
No, let me just, I'll choose something very quick. Are you talking about my building or this one?
No, the one on the front.
Oh, the front building, so it has nothing to do with my building, I guess?
No, no. Other than a handicap spot.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're good?
Yeah, yeah, as soon as we get that plan from, from the engineer.
No problem. Am I taking those or are you there?
Well, they're part of the application.
Yeah, no, we're going to keep these. Well, actually, we don't need all.
We don't need all of them.
They need to be updated.
All right, I'll call them up.
We'll pull a couple back and we'll keep a couple.
All set, so we're good?
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you very much. Wish everybody a wonderful morning. Goodbye.
Moving on. 24, Special Permit 242, 266 Mount Ponsett Street, JDE Civilian for Forensic Development, Site Plan Review, Post Senior Hasting Call.
Good evening. My name is Lloyd Geisinger, President of Forensic Development. Here with my partner David Eastridge, an art engineering, Driscoll from JDE Engineering. What we are hoping to accomplish this evening is to introduce, reintroduce you to the project and answer any questions that you might have for your benefit and the, anyone watching at home as well, just very briefly recap how we got to where we are and how we believe that we would propose to move forward. As I believe everyone is aware, the, this is the result of a town meeting vote that occurred in December, which established an overlay zoning district that is coincident with what's shown in the colored green here. It comprises two separate pieces of land, 266 Mount Ponsett, which is the application that we've made to you that we're discussing this evening, and 265, the larger parcel, which we expect to be filed, we're worried in about a month. The 266 is comprised of a 30-unit, three-story elevated building. On 265, there are two 36-unit buildings, both three stories. And as I, as we have discussed at town meeting in the past, in addition to the senior housing being proposed, there is also a requirement based on town meeting vote that we will deed this parcel of land to the town, which is designated for the new home for a senior center. There's also an obligation on our part to build these pickleball courts, which will be improved by us and then deeded to the town as well. All of this is captured in a master development agreement, which was voted at town meeting and has since been signed by us as well as the Selectmen and provides the, if you will, the framework for what's before you this evening. The master, the, excuse me, the town meeting vote, in addition to establishing an overlay zoning district, also established in some cases, different zoning bulk and dimensional requirements. And that's what allows us to go forward with the plan that you see before you this evening. Our hope and expectation is that the board will designate a peer review engineer this evening or whatever your normal procedure is, and that the plans that we've submitted to you, we would expect, would be provided to the engineer who will work with Gray. And it's that peer review engineer who is probably most, best, I should say, best suited to walk through the overlay zoning and the change in the bulk and dimensional requirements and confirm for you that these plans are consistent with those new requirements. So rather than walking through those this evening, our goal, and all will answer whatever questions you might have, was to provide you with an overview instead, with, as I said, the expectation that they'll be a peer review. So with that as an introduction, we're going to turn it over to Dave Eastridge, who'll give you a little more detail and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Dave Eastridge, Forensic Development. So this is just kind of a zoom in of the 266 building area. So as you can see, there are two entrances to the site, one just kind of south of the plaza entrance. This is a one-way exit. This is both an entrance and an exit here. There'll be a crosswalk installed with all the appropriate signage so that you can get from 266 across the street to the senior center, 265, and/or the pit lane. so that you can get from 266 across the street to Senior Center, 265, and/or the pickleball courts. As Lloyd mentioned, 30-unit building, three stories, 10 units on a floor, elevator. Built the entrances on both sides of the building. This is a freestanding garage building, so there'll be 12 individual garage spaces in that building, all of the kind of individual garage doors that you would see, you know, on a single-family home. So as a reminder, this is a senior housing overlay district, so this community is for those... 80% of them have to be sold to those that are 55 or older, and there are no school-aged children allowed in the building.
In the 80%?
At all. At all. So no school-aged children at all. And then there has to be at least one owner over 55 in 80% of the units. So 20%, in theory, you could have someone who's 50 that owns, you know, under 20%. This is an indoor and half-site. And as Lloyd mentioned, we're not going to get into the kind of the details of the bulk and dimensional one... bulk, bulk and dimensional restrictions. But this, you know, we believe that this does comply with all the bulk and dimensional requirements within the new overlay district. So we're not asking for any additional waivers or variances. In terms of a mix, this building will have 12 one-bedroom units and 18 two-bedroom units. In terms of parking, there are a total of two spaces per unit, which is also included in the bulk and dimensional table. And in this case, I wanted to note that 13 of the spaces that are within that calculation are located across the street in this area right here. And again, that's allowed as part of that.
I'm sorry?
There's 13 parking spaces that are located here. And so that's part of the total that makes up two spaces per unit. In this area over here, we have about 1.6 spaces per unit. And we find that for an active and healthy community with this mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms, sometimes we're in the actual 1.3, 1.4 range of what will actually get used. So we believe that this will really be guest parking in terms of practical use of that. In terms of, let's see... In terms of grading, just general description, this building will sit a few feet above the road, a couple of feet over here, probably about five feet over here as this Mount Ponset Street goes down and as it goes from north to south. These entrances will both kind of ramp up so that this parking level is on grade with the first floor here. And obviously, the garages have to be on grade with this parking lot. So this parking lot sits a few feet above Mount Ponset Street. This area here... So this plan is actually exactly what you saw for 266 like two years ago. It really hasn't changed at all. The only thing that's changed is that this area, we were putting a detention basin in this area. We're now going to put our leaching fields here and the stormwater detention, the primary area, is going to go underneath this parking lot. So that basically opens up this back area for use, you know, as a, you know, an active lawn, you know, if you will, as opposed to repeating, you know, some kind of detention basin that would... really couldn't be used as amenity at all. So as I mentioned, the main kind of stormwater is located under this parking area, all underground. This collects all of this paving here, all of the roof runoff from this building. As I said, these two areas slope down to the street, so there's a couple of catch basins kind of located here and here, and a couple of small little basins here and here that kind of catch that little bit of runoff that is directed towards the street. That's really it in terms of, you know, an overview, in terms of the dimensions and what's in the building and the like. I realize that you are kind of being presented with almost a whole new zoning bylaw, if you will, as it applies to this site. But we figured we would start kind of at a high level and then respond to any questions you might have.
You open up a question?
Yes.
I have a question that's just basically even start out question number one. Bottom line, there's been plenty of things being posted, written, Facebook, on social media, and even a video that went out. Just to make sure that we have it on record, these are three stories.
Correct.
Then there's no four stories. I mean, it was presented to the public that one or multiple buildings were going to be four stories. And that's certainly not the case. These are... The application shows three three-story buildings, correct?
This is... Again, we've... we're consistent. This is... This is representative architecture.
And I'm pretty sure those were the pitches from the jump start.
Exactly.
So nothing's been...
Nothing's changed.
I said before, and nothing's been changed, altered, or even since then, they've always been presented as three stories.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So there was misinformation being throughout about that?
The relationship... So this, these are 10 units per floor, 30 units, three floors. These are 12 units per floor, three floors, 36 units. And you can see these buildings are slightly longer, basically one unit longer than the one on 266. So these will have 36 units each and this will have 30 units.
So it's like there never was an extra story put on building number one there because of the size, shape of the lot? It's always been three stories?
Correct.
Can I ask, have we perked for the septic system? Is that given? Are we sure that's where it's going or is there...
So we've perked two-thirds of the lot, but we still want to do some additional perks in the rear here. So we've perked close to it, but we need probably two more in order to make our submission to the Board of Health.
Two more?
Two more.
Pertests. Yeah. So we're planning on doing that over the next couple of weeks. Honestly, it's been really wet.
Yeah.
We've had a couple of months. So hopefully, we'll get a good window in the next few weeks and do those additional perk tests. And that data will be included as part of the submission to the Board of Health, which will be, you know, probably the primary board that focuses on the leaching field.
Can I just ask, the Mount Ponset Street there, is the layout 50 feet there?
I believe it is. Yet you might have it in the A R plan.
The reason I'm asking is...
Actually, our next... your next agenda item, the Form A plan, likely shows it on that plan. Because that's the kind of detail. Let's see if Greg can pull it out here.
The reason I ask is because there's been much commentary about the fact that it's situated 20 feet from the property line, which isn't aesthetically maybe not as bad as it sounds, depending on where... if there's a... I don't recall if there's a sidewalk on this side.
There was definitely a sidewalk on this.
So there's... It's 50 feet in that area.
Okay, that was mine.
It's not consistent all the length of Mount Ponset Street.
But in that area...
But in this area, we have dimension right here that's 50 feet. It looks consistent across there. So...
The paved area is probably somewhere around 24 feet maybe?
Probably a little bit wider than that, 26-ish.
26-ish?
Yeah. So you have, you know, a good, you know, seven feet, you know, on each side from the gutter line to the property line. So visually, that gets added.
Well, that's what I was getting at. Aesthetically, it's going to look further back yet, might otherwise sound.
So it'll... You know, our buildings that... You know, I've looked at that one specifically. So our buildings are set just a little over 20 feet, about 21 feet.
I saw that.
It showed 21 on the other side.
28-ish in terms of from the gutter line there.
Those two rear doors that go out there on the walkway, do they go onto a sidewalk?
Yeah, so there's a sidewalk.
He's coming up with the... No, that's for across the street.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that's going to run all the way up here. It's kind of... It's shown here. It's kind of light because it's inside the right of way. It's right along the curb line here. That's going to be a continuous sidewalk that runs, and there's a sidewalk that's in front of the plaza.
Same thing on the east side of Mount Ponset.
So this one here, so this... So this one, we're not putting a heavy sidewalk that runs continuously up this side. This was something that in preparation for this meeting and looking at the master development agreement, there's a commitment to make a sidewalk basically from the site up to 106. So we're going to have that by having this sidewalk run continuously up. There was also discussion that didn't seem to make it in the agreement, so we're still committed to run a sidewalk from here down to the housing authority to the south of us.
I do recall that being said.
Yeah. I thought it was going to be in the... It didn't show up in the agreement, but we are... I'm standing here committing to do that because that was discussed. And it's actually shown on this exhibit, this kind of light area there. So we're going to build this sidewalk all along here. We're going to build a sidewalk all along here.
And it's going to stop at the crosswalk? Is that right?
This sidewalk... Oh, yes. Actually, stop at the sidewalk that goes into 265, which is pretty much the same spot as the crosswalk. And then this sidewalk will run all the way up to here, and there's an existing sidewalk in front of the plaza. So these folks that live here, instead of walking, which I saw two people today, were walking and staying on this edge and kind of on balance beam right along here, they'll be able to go use this crosswalk and continue up.
Could you please...
Hold on a second. How would he spend 224 Mount Ponset Street? 266, where is that going with peach trees on it?
Correct. Yeah. So we demoed that house, you know, probably a couple of months ago now. That, the main house was located right about here. The little farm stand was over here. And those kind of dilapidated garages were located in this area, just to give you a reference. Let's zoom into this.
Right now, I'm concerned about the runoff. Are they going to put a retention pond in there of some sort or...
Yeah, you really need to address the board so that we can get an answer. That's okay.
That's fine.
Yeah. You open the question.
Yep, sure. So I might turn to Gray for the details on this one. But essentially, there's a hydrology study that gets done for the property and it compares the existing conditions today with the proposed conditions after we build this. And it compares how much runoff is going to occur at different points of analysis, kind of here, here, and compares it for different storm events, a two-year storm, a five-year storm, 10, 25, 100, et cetera. And in this case, all of our... All the runoff for each storm event gets reduced. So whatever is going off the property in any one of these points of analysis is actually reduced. So in terms of your specific question on the basins, so there's... You're not going to see much in terms of big, you know, pits that look like detention basins out there. Underneath the parking here, there's a large system that has these arched, basically polyethylene chambers that run from here to here and are about, I don't know, 40 feet wide or so, surrounded by crushed stone. So that's the main stormwater feature on the site. And all the roof runoff and the paving runoff from this area is directed to that. There... You'll see small little detention basins kind of here and here that capture a little bit of lawn area and a little bit of paving area here and here. So those are the only things that you'll kind of notice on the surface. The rest of it is all underground.
My problem is the French drain to take the water away. Are they going to be overloaded in the... They put a set of pipes from the French drain over to the retention pond in the golf course so the water trucks through. But when we bought the house, the willow trees were out there and they carved that orange bird pipe. And now I get two days into this house and six inches of water. And out of what came to... They had a head-on collision. In fact, it was March 1st. And they had a head-on collision and I wound up getting sued and insurance and all that, paid for part of it, and I got to pay for the rest of the... So I'm concerned about putting water across, running across the road or whatever. I'm concerned about where's this water going to go now after you get through building something like that?
Sure. Well, this is something that typically, you know, if the board sees fit, they would engage with a peer review consultant, typically another civil engineer that they choose, we fund, that looks specifically at that type of thing. There's a nice thick report that Greg generated and submitted as part of this application that talks specifically to all those items. So that's usually how it gets better. So you don't have to take our word for it. There'll be typically third-party review.
And we would have whoever that engineer is come to the board and present his findings and explain whatever issues or non-issues. So we will take note and make sure that we're addressing that.
Algea 340 from the street. Okay, so now that structure there is huge, okay? You have all the drainage, you have the septic. Now you have lot line to lot line, everything is squeezed in there. Look at that little thing over there, the community center. Why can't that big monstrosity go back over there where it originally was on the first plan? I mean, that will look like Brockton in 10 years, right along 58. It's going to look terrible. I mean, I know it's probably the final figure and everybody signed off on it, but that is going to look like a dump.
That's a legitimate question. Could that fit on that site?
Well, one, we've never shown the Senior Center.
Yes. The Senior Center's... You know... Excuse me, I'm sorry. That big one was over the other side on the original plan. I wish I had one of those. See if we can get some clarification.
So at this point, the zoning, the town meeting vote that established the zoning for the two parcels of land and the master development agreement that was approved at town meeting specifies specifically where the buildings will go, what the site plan will look like, and this is the plan that we're obligated to build. Other things were looked at when we were looking at a 40B, 230-unit apartment project, which is what I believe this chairman was referring to when there were, in fact, more buildings on this side. But that's not the plan that went forward at town meeting. This is a senior housing community. And this is specifically what has been agreed to and we're following through on that commitment.
Any chance building one can go westbound at all?
No.
You've got 21 feet to the property line and there's no room to move it back at all?
No, there is not. This is where the building needs to go. We will prepare, and we're in the process of preparing more detailed three-dimensional modeling so that you can better understand the relationship of the building to the street. But these relationships and distances are distances that we've worked with many times before. What we're trying to do is create a streetscape that engages the building with the outdoor spaces. We're not trying to create a suburban setting here in which the building is set far back. And so this will be heavily landscaped, extremely attractive. But we will provide you with three-dimensional modeling at our next meeting.
Were the garages always there?
Yes.
I don't recall the garages before.
They put it in there with a shoe horn. There really is no room in this area.
How many were there? How many, 12?
12.
Now, were those full garages or were they just...
12 by 22.
I mean, three-sided or four-sided?
No, no, no.
Full garage, full, yeah.
Yeah, this is one building, all enclosed, 12 individual garage doors.
I didn't know if it was just like a whole hang.
So when you're saying you're climbing up from Mount Ponset Street, like you said, like five feet?
Yes.
How's that garage, is that close to lot line going to be the same grade as the parking lot?
This... I've actually spoken with you about it over here a few times. So we're working through the details of landscaping that we'll hopefully again...
So that garage, you know, the garage would be way above the existing grade?
Yes, it'll be about five feet above. That's correct.
And it's like, what, 10 feet from the lot line, five feet?
It varies, but it's less than 10 feet, yeah.
So we have to do a retainer wall?
Not a separate... Well, basically, you'll pour, basically pour a taller foundation. So you'll pour like a, you know, a nine-foot wall, basically, and that'll serve as the foundation. And as a retaining wall, kind of good. And then, we've, uh, as part of the master development agreement, there's some, let's call it, basic landscape commitments that were included in that. And, um, so there's a number of screening plans that go on this edge. There's thirteen junipers that are required along here, some other screening related to 265. Those are pretty, let's call it minimal. We're gonna do far more than that. But we've submitted a more detailed plan to the, to the butter. Um, spoke with them a couple times over this past week, and I'm gonna meet with them next week to kind of go over the nitty-gritty as to what he's gonna see. Because we recognize that it's, that, you know, it's right there, the...
Shielded outdoor lights on the parking lot?
Yes, no, no, all dark sky stuff. And in this case here, the only lights will be, um, mounting on the garages, you know, pointing that way. So, um, nothing's going in this direction. There's gonna be a light pole here, but again, all, all dark sky and blind.
Can I ask why we don't have a site plan that has dimensions on it?
It's part of the full engineering set that was submitted.
Yeah, the plan I think I was handing around was the A R one.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's, um, a full roll, thirteen, thirteen sheets. And it has, uh, your typical dimensional table of required and provided.
I actually printed out the, uh, the setback requirements today, looking at them again. The twenty-foot setbacks that is the... And then the accessory buildings is literally five feet.
Question. Is there someone that's willing to maintain the property?
I assume, well, I'll let you answer the question. Go ahead, Ken.
Yes, there, there will be condominium associations, and typically the, uh, structure of that is they'll have, uh, five trustees that are elected by the unit owners and their fiduciary allegations as to maintaining the property.
Does that get taken over? At what point, at what percentage?
Typically, at seventy-five percent.
Seventy percent is coming over to your association.
And, um, yeah, so that would, that would be the timing of the deal from developer control to unit owner control.
If anybody would like to see that you can come up with one upon.
And the good thing about a community of this size is that there's a substantial budget that goes along with it, the collection of all the condo fees. So, it's not, you're not relying on two or three people to maintain the property. And again, if you look at any of our existing communities, they are extremely well-maintained, especially landscaping.
The key is reserve funds. Where everybody tends to dip into the reserve.
I, I start from high. So, I'm the one who, who creates the condominium budgets, and you're required to do ten percent. We usually shut them down just for that very reason. And I don't want to be accused of, you know, um, giving a false budget.
All right. When you drive down on Ponce Street and you look to the left, talking about going south on 58, it seems to be a lot of junk in that area. The rubbish barrel, the rubbish company doesn't empty them, so the stuff gets blown around and whatnot, and that's another concern, you know? Bill made mention of another town. It's gonna look like that. It already looks like that at times. Nobody goes by to pick it up or clean it up.
What's on the road, I would imagine highway would be responsible for, but maybe on your, your property? I, I don't know that, I can't say that I...
Um, I, I don't, I'm not aware of any current trash barrels that are out for the projects. There were, this looked like a disaster for a long time.
We have the real thing, trash.
Yeah.
They're there, the trash is there.
Blows from, blows out of the barrel like...
Whatever, if my barrel blew out, somebody'd be saying, hey, I'll open that up.
We have no issue sending people to freshen up.
Just to maintain the...
We're looking forward to it. I mean, inside of this has been dumping ground for a number of years. So, um, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm excited about getting all the mattresses and things like that, and tires off, off the property.
Even that site still has a lot of debris sitting on it, bricks and...
Sure. The motorcycle, so it screws. If it doesn't work, get another one and leave that one there.
Yeah.
So, the parking lot in the back, it's permeable surface that'll allow for the water to go through it?
No, it's, um, it has catch basins, and the, uh, the runoff is directed to the subsurface infiltration system via the drives.
And you mentioned one and two bedroom units?
Yes.
There's no threes?
Correct.
How many one and two-bedroom units are there?
Uh, there are twelve one-bedrooms and eighteen two-bedrooms. Within the master development agreement, they mentioned kind of the, um, a reference point on the bedroom count for the, the combined project. So, we are complying with that, um, and that actually allows for a number of three-bedroom units, but we, we don't have any term planned out.
I just wanna give them one more chance.
In the front of that building, because it's so close to the road, I'm front corrugated, seven rows with... From that building, I had suggested at one of our other meetings that if you look at the giant arborvitae that are down there, the veterans, the, uh, veterinarian building there, his property, how tall those grow. And I said, even though they're talking here about landscaping in front of this building, what you're really seeing is just like driving by this wall right here. All you're seeing in this building, if you've got a bunch of sparsely put-up trees and what have you. If you plant giant arborvitae in there, which I recommend, these grow to be fifty-two feet high. You plant them ten feet apart, you don't have to prune them, you don't have to nut them. There's no acorns, there's no needles, they just grow. And they're also a sound barrier for the people that live in this complex from the noise of the people driving up and down there. And I had recommended putting in giant arborvitae in front of this building, back off the street a little bit, so when you pull out of these driveways, your vision isn't impaired looking north and south. Um, and I think that that should be part of the agreement with this project, that this type of buffer be put in there. And any other part of this project that is not a good view for the neighbor, consider using these giant arborvitae, whether it's to block off the view of the garage or any other outbuilding that might be visible from all around the world. This is a senior project in there. These people are gonna pay good money for these condos. They want the privacy. They're not moving in there for the motorcycle game or the kids on the bicycles or the scooters or anything else. They're moving in there because they want privacy and adult living. So, therefore, placing this type of growth around that hood and on both sides of the road in certain areas would be beneficial for that project and to the town, I believe.
Good, thank you. I think you've addressed the landscaping in the, in the plan correctly.
Well, we'll, when we come back to our three-dimensional rendering for the building, we'll include the full landscaping plan as well, so...
And discuss it at that...
Yeah, I, I think that's the best approach is, let's, let's put the full picture in there. The, the trees, the shrubs will all be rendered to scale at, at the size that they will be planted at, not the size they'll be in twenty-five years. Um, so you'll get, um, a really good picture as to what it'll look like from different angles, driving down the street, you know, that, that type of thing.
That makes sense.
I think, I think...
See the rendering.
See that and then react to it.
Once those storm drains are full and under the parking lot is full, where's all this water gonna go?
Well, they're designed for the hundred-year storm.
Well, I mean, we've all seen some pretty good storms around here, and...
I mean, you, you designed ones, you engineered them for a particular storm. We're gonna follow, you know, the stormwater handbook and design it to what you're supposed to design it for. That's, I mean, you can...
None of it's, none of it's gonna go back towards fifty, uh, row fifty-eights? Or towards the off course of...
I don't, I'm not gonna get into kind of all, all the details of all the exact designing points and the, and the storms. I would say, let's, let's have the, let's have the peer reviewer take a look at it. You know, that's the...
He's the person who should be grilling it, you know?
Yeah, and then, you know, they'll come to the meeting, and, uh, you know, you can ask the questions of, let's, let's say, the neutral party.
Okay.
Unless somebody else has a question, I think we should probably settle on a review engineer and the requisite deposit for revolving fund to...
Well, I definitely have a few more questions.
Oh, go for it.
Because all our models, which is, when you have observation holes and you have models, that's the first sight of water, correct? Like signs, yes, so, so when you're doing a par test and you see...
Modeling.
Modeling, that's the first signs of like water table, correct?
These are all high ground water, yeah.
Okay. Most of this lot...
Or the historical high groundwater, you know?
Most of this lot, the water table is at less than three feet, except for two holes.
Um, we're gonna do our part test, and I think we'll just let the engineers...
This is all engineering review.
That's fine, but I'm asking because I think that it's a thing to ask about. We need to talk about all these things.
Exactly, and that's when we get the engineering...
Well, I, I have, I have questions now, Tom.
No, that's fine. I don't have any questions. I'm not gonna start you from asking questions. Just saying we're not gonna get a lot of answers until we have a revision.
I'm asking questions, 'cause I think we just talked about a couple of things to answer. We have models, we have water table...
We get a couple of thugs here, and they said they have to get more, of course, so that's all there is to it. And all the models do is determine the seasonal high water table, and that'll just determine what the height of everything has to be. Pretty much what it comes down to.
And the, the good thing about this, again, I'm not gonna go into the details, sorry.
No, please continue, Tom.
I'll, I'll respond to questions.
Which building is gonna have the kids in it? You said no kids, but with you. That one, two, three. So, no kids, nowhere?
No kids, nowhere, correct. So, senior housing, based on federal law, allows us to write into the condominium documents that no children under the age of eighteen are permitted to reside here permanently. And that we've committed as part of the master development agreement, and in fact, every senior community we've ever built has that restriction in it. So, none of these homes, your, your, your children or your grandchildren can visit, but they can't reside there permanently.
What about the twenty percent that are not over fifty-five?
That applies to the owners, but they still cannot have children living there permanently.
Do you remember hearing from a mass housing person at one of your, um, one of your, uh, presentations prior to the town meeting and stating that it was against federal HUD law?
It's not against federal HUD law.
Okay.
No.
But it is.
Well, I've been doing this forty years. We've built a dozen of these communities. We, we've, in every case, done what I've just said. I'm intimately familiar with the law, and I, I would suggest that you recheck your facts on that.
Well, I'm telling you what a mass housing person said.
It, it is permitted for a senior housing community. So, that's, what, you should go back to that person and ask them again.
There's been a lot of misinformation being thrown out there.
Yeah.
To say the least.
It's good to have these hearings.
I guess the next, uh, thing to do is to designate a peer review engineer. Myself personally, I'm comfortable with Pat. Could I turn in?
I think we should use somebody different. I think we should use Outback Engineering in Middleborough.
Where have they worked before?
They work all over, and I just think that it would be good to have a set up...
For companies that have...
Um, tons of projects all over. I'm just thinking that we should have a peer review that is looking at it with, um, a company and not, and not just one person.
So, two peer, so two engineers, you're saying? Well, even, even a company typically assigns it to one person.
But a company team is there. I'm thinking that we should go to Outback Engineering. Or something different.
I'm comfortable with Pat myself.
I personally see a huge advantage to a peer review engineer that's quite familiar with Halifax in, in its layout and its dimensions and... And I've never heard a complaint against this gentleman either. I think he's, I personally think he's very thorough, very efficient, and...
And very responsive.
Very, yes, if you have a question, you can get ahold of him, he gets back to you. Uh, I don't know, I'm a little satisfied with Mr. Brennan now.
Well, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we retain, um, Pat Brennan as the engineer.
The review engineer?
The peer review engineer, yes.
I'll second.
We're gonna set up a revolving account?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll do that after. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, to employ Pat Brennan. I forget the name of his firm. Is it...
PGB.
PGB, that's what it is.
He was, he's not with his company anymore.
Yeah, he was with anyone before. And to retain him for the peer review for this site. All those in favor?
Can I request a vocal?
Yes. Mr. Murray, yes. Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. Tru?
No.
Mr. Millius?
Yes.
Three to one, uh, we are going to retain Mr. Brennan to do our peer review. Now we need to come up with a figure on... Somebody help me here. Historically, what have we done on initial deposits?
Fifty-three grand, something around there.
I'm thinking that it's probably gonna be a little bit more than that.
Eleven-three?
I would think so. I mean, there's a lot more depth. I think we should start with ten thousand.
I think that's...
Because I, they'll get, they'll get back what they need. It's thirty units. There's a whole, we need, we need to protect the town.
I think you're being punitive.
I'm not.
And I think you're grandstanding, to be honest with you. I'd be happy with five grand. That sounds reasonable. If, if it starts to creep up, we can go back.
I, I mean, if I, if I could suggest, we're happy to put five thousand in, and if you wanna ask him for a estimate of his work and it's, and it's more than that, we can supplement that immediately.
Thank you.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's fair.
I think. I'll make a motion then that we open revolving account to five thousand dollars to end based on, uh, a reasonable estimate to increase it if it's necessary.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to open the account with five thousand dollars for Fund Day Development. All those in favor? The others?
Done for tonight?
Done with this one.
Yes, thank you very much.
Um, one, one question for the chair. Um, in terms of, uh, timing for next hearing, would you think, uh, a month from now? Do you have time to do a peer review?
Yeah, we probably should set another day.
Yeah.
No, yeah, when he did. The last meeting, I don't know, the last meeting, it was even... Well, we can ask for an extension if we're not ready.
Of course.
Why don't you put it for the first one in May, come on, it's my off time.
We, um, we would prefer it to be end of April, and if needed, certainly, but if, if he's ready...
Let you for that, I don't think.
Yeah.
If it can't be done, great. If we have to put it up on...
The one more.
Okay, there's an awful lot of effort. Here I go again. There's an awful lot of effort keeping this on that side. What is the big deal to put that over the other side? I mean, what is, what is the big deal? I mean, is it that much of a deal? I mean, what would be more pleasant to everybody in town to drive up and see the senior center on the bright-hand side than... on the right-hand side than to have that monstrosity 20 feet off the road? I mean, is it, is it that much of a big deal? I mean, before?
Well, we'd have to get that plan read.
I mean, everybody grant, granted, everybody agreed to it, but is it that much of a big deal to put that building over the other side? You'd have a lot more room and probably a lot less effort.
Was there some rationale to it all?
Is there going to be 60 parking lots in that senior center? No, there isn't.
At this point, we are, we, we have, we're moving forward with the plan that's been approved. I, I can't comment one way or the other without studying it, whether we think that, how that plan would lay out. But all I can say to you is that at this point, with the town meeting approval and the MDA signed and the plan's drawn, we intend to move forward with this layout. And we're not, it's just, we're not entertaining any change to it.
Has the state approved the bylaw yet?
That is pending. You'll have to check with town administrator for the status on that. My, my understanding is it's imminent.
In other words, it's going to be held, you're going to hold them responsible to what they signed or what they.
Well, the state still, the attorney general still has to approve the overlay district.
Right.
That has not been approved by the state.
It just seems like there's an awful lot of effort to put that over there when you can put that little tiny building over there with a lot less effort.
Can I also ask why you're going to start building on the west instead of the east?
We felt that the, moving forward, establishing that edge.
Can I, can I just interrupt for a second? We have a motion on the floor.
And a second that was for the?
For the, for the amount of money?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, we did, we did. We did, we did.
Well, we're just in discussion right now.
Okay, I, I just want to be sure we passed that, I couldn't remember.
So again.
Um, we felt that establishing where, where 266 is a single building with its improvements that we could completely finish and establish the edge so that as people drove up, they would see a completed product, that it made sense to start on this side. We also feel that the, the views from the rear of the building looking out over the Gulf Force will be very appealing and so it made sense to us to start here. Finally, this is the smaller building, which from a financing standpoint is a little bit easier to, to digest. And so for those reasons, we wanted to start on this side. It was, to be honest with you, a flip of the coin. It's not as though we felt very strongly about this, but as we worked through it from a marketing standpoint, we felt we were better off establishing this as a completed product that people could be see finished because as we move over here, there'll be a lot more construction.
How does that affect the senior center progress? Yes, so you're still waiting for that building to end the other two before you?
No, no, the, we would, the, the senior center, we're obligated after the first 36 closings to provide a bond or a letter of credit for the last, the next 36. And it's once that first 36, those first 36 units have closed, that the senior.
So you're looking at two buildings, because that's only 30.
We're, we're, we're going to, we're going to suggest to the, to the selectmen and to the, and to coding that we truncate from 72 to 66 units so that they, we'll increase the payment per unit so that the, the spirit of what was approved remains the same. So in other words, the 30-unit building plus the 36-unit building will fully cover, fully fund the, it's a little more of a financial burden on us, but not a significant change.
Good question.
That was kind of.
Anything else? Okay, so we didn't set a date at, so the 18th of April?
18th, April 18th.
I'm going to let you deal.
And then we will adjust as needed?
Of course. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. And we have a Form A application. Next up. Would you like to present the, for?
Sure.
All right, so this is for the property across the street, 265 on Ponsetts. The property, this is the entire property currently today. We're proposing to, um, do a property line here and this will be remaining land. This, we cut off this lot here for the pickleball courts and then this lot for the lot one for the senior center. So that's kind of the proposal, I think.
So this is consistent with the master development agreement. Um, we need to do this obviously prior to conveying either lot one or lot three to the town and the, the large parcel to the right of the 12.48 acres, that's, I would be committed for a conservation restriction on that, on that parcel. So this will, to the right, parcel A will end up being, have a conservation restriction on it. And then there's the main parcel for the other two buildings, the 72 units, the pickleball courts and the senior center.
The pickleball court only has a, a few.
And it's designated section. Seems pretty straightforward. Obviously, they like to say nothing to see here.
Yeah, really.
I'm just curious, why pickleball courts?
It's kind of the trend, you know, at the moment.
At the moment?
See how long it lasts.
Kind of like racquetball?
There are people who.
Remember racquet, I still got my racket.
Yeah, me too.
There are people who think it'll last generations of others who think it'll fade over the next 10 years.
Much people across the street start shooting at because they can't take the noise anymore.
That's, uh, that came up this morning in my conversation with the PZs there.
I've heard, I've heard comments from other towns where people are just losing their mind because of the.
It's an issue where.
Was it Brockton they put in there?
It's one of those today.
The curtain type thing, the, the noise? I think it was Brock.
I think soft to paddles, like ping pong paddles.
Well, see that.
They fixed soft once, they always love his noise.
Some kind of spongy curtain they put up on the fences that.
Yeah, Easton put up some pickleball courts and right next to somebody's house and somewhere in the town was talking about the pickleball.
Well, I, I.
Some, some.
You think they're going to be like, that's going to make it appealing to the, to the condos?
And again, it's also, it's open to town residents.
Yeah.
You know, there's a full-on parking lot, um, you know, as part of the senior center. And, uh, yeah, so this is, this isn't exclusive, to be clear, this isn't exclusive to.
And it could be changed to something else if they can.
Yeah.
With the same size as tennis?
Yeah, yeah, we'll build it as pickleball courts and then the town won it at that point, it'll be up to you as to how, you know.
So once the town owns it, the town has to maintain it too?
Yep.
That is correct, yeah.
Which then on that 130 feet of frontage leaves us with nothing to do to recuperate anything if need be. We have to be future thought. This is, this is the town residence that we represent.
I'm sorry, I'm against the town residence. Is that what we're saying here?
I'm saying that we have to think about it. That's what our job is.
The time will tell. It's all.
Laugh all you want.
Not laughing.
Just honest.
Now I'm laughing. It's a straightforward presentation, that's all, I got to see the agenda.
Usually the diameter would touch the street and, um.
It's not a building on water.
Well, what about on lot one?
It doesn't have to touch the street, it just touches the street.
I don't know, it's a little street. The engineering span of one, it's a little street. But who cares?
It's a little issue. I don't see that issue.
I'm still going to continue on the fact that it isn't an accepted law by the state yet, so this isn't full, so we should think of that and maybe have it updated and push it off to the next meeting so that it can be properly drawn up.
The Form A has nothing to do with the bylaw.
Well, it will be detrimental to them if the bylaw doesn't go through, that they won't have.
Well, that doesn't go through period.
Then it doesn't go through period.
Well, if we're roving an A and R inside of the bylaw, then it is, it's recorded at the registry of deeds.
That's their loss, not ours. The town ends up with a lot. You don't want the town to end up with something?
I'm just looking out for the town on all angles and discussing.
How does that hurt the town to end up owning the property?
I'm discussing everything because that's what should be done.
I'm just asking you the question. How would it hurt the town if we end up owning a lot?
We'll see.
Did you want to, I'm not listening to you. Where you are, my house is, that's me.
That's it?
All right, so.
You, you need to be able, so everyone can hear this, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to know where my house is in relationship to everything else.
Do, do, do you mind, I tell you, we're getting close to actually ending the meeting. Would you guys mind asking, answering a few questions for this gentleman?
No.
At, at the closing.
Why can't we talk about them right now? He wants to talk about them and maybe it'll be something that the town wants to hear.
I just want to be real easy about what, what's going on around here, that's all. It's not going to stop.
We don't, we don't need to stop the meeting. If you have questions, I believe that they should be asked.
Is it, is it a question regarding the Form A, Amy?
He has a question. I don't know what the question is.
I don't believe it's regarding the Form A.
But you're cutting him off, he's asking a question.
I want to see here where his house was.
Do you have to indicate anything? I gotta pick up the rubber.
Yes.
So could you just point to the lot where the gentleman's, where your house is, right there? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks.
You're welcome.
There you go.
Thanks.
Motion? Make a motion to approve the Form A, approve the Form A as shown. For 265 on Ponsetts. Is that it, 24A, 243?
Yep.
By J.B. Civil Inc. for Thondike.
Does it have to be subject to board approval or agency approval or is it just, like you said, just the Form A, that's all?
They own the property and they're dealing, they're going to subdivide it out to D, but they can, they can Form A their own property.
I'll second his motion then.
Movement seconded to approve the Form A as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Gann?
Yes.
It's true?
Approval is not required, yes.
Correct. Mr. Millius, myself, yes. You animus? That's signed. No, that was just a, 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 a. Uh, yeah, we do have a minute, so you stay away. 21st?
What?
21st?
I don't have any cards on me, but I can leave one outside and, and.
I turned it flips, man.
And all this stuff on it too. So you get a kind of a full picture of what's, what's on. Because this is kind of blank, you know what I mean, in terms of what's going to happen.
Use Daniel's magic over here.
The magic thing?
See, very considerable, we have here, here, senior center. But, but nothing is happening kind of from here or from across the street. It'll. Yeah. We're going to talk to, we've been talking with this about, he's got a couple of, um, his shed and strata and a lot and stuff like that, so we're trying to work with the chain and. I'm not, I'm not, I don't think, I don't think the chain would come into action in this public, um, related to this.
So happy.
He's owned this property, so create it over. Yeah, he, he originally owned this and then sold it to us and now we're pretty much not.
We're all good, we're all good, we're all good, we're all good. Uh, I think you, you two guys will be able to talk in there.
Yep.
You can put one this way.
All right.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your help.
Sure.
Do you want to roll with them?
If you don't mind, yeah.
Come on up. Sign.
All right, thank you.
Give the magic elastic.
Oh, the elastic, yep, I have it.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you are bringing all of them.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. What else do we have?
Do you need two copies of that signed?
Um, I don't think so. No, I don't think so. I think it's just the one, that's what we did last time.
There's another copy in here, this one.
I don't know why they have, why they send that many copies. I don't even, you know. They're probably just copying the amount of plans they have.
Yes.
Uh, the only thing left is, uh, meeting minutes from March 7th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to me, uh, prove the meeting minutes as written.
I'll second that. I didn't find any, any changes to leashes or anything on it.
Movement seconded to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Always closed, you animus? The only other item was some mail and correspondence from Pepper Planning Board and Site Plan for Public Hearing, this Bridgewater Planning Board, a special permit decision, Middleborough Planning Board, notice of public hearing. Anybody who wants to read those, they will be available. The next scheduled meeting is April 4th, 2024.
Do you want, uh, anything in our motion to accept the correspondence from the other town?
I don't think I need to.
All righty.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Pass the motion.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you animus? I'm not even going to ask for a vote. I wonder if that form.